It is seven o'clock.
All councilors are present with one vacancy.
I'll do the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Special orders?
We have a proclamation in recognition of the Beloit International Film Festival.
And Vice President Levy will read it, but we're lucky to have with us, if you would join Mr. Levy at the stage, Marty Dench, President of BIF, and we have the two executive directors, the current and the future, Max Macon and Rod Bowden. You'll do a Sinatra number later, right? Okay, thank you. Okay, Kevin, go ahead.
Good evening. The City of Beloit, Wisconsin, official proclamation. Whereas in 2017, the Beloit International Film Festival will mark a dozen years as a much anticipated element of the cultural calendar in this community. And whereas BIF has inspired area businesses and institutions to engage in a partnership to promote Beloit and to attract broadly representative and diverse audiences to this city. And whereas BIF has been true to its missions of enhancing the business life and reputation of Beloit by keeping its core venues in the downtown area. And whereas BIF has developed from a long weekend in 2006 to 10 days and nights of films and entertainment, and year-round offerings of films attracting artists from around the world. And whereas BIF continues this concern for the community through such programs as Kids at BIF and the Beloit Health System BIF Care Series. And whereas Rod Bowden, who has brought a unique spirit to this community, as he has shaped this festival since its beginning, was stepped down this year as Executive Director, yielding its direction to Max Macon, a native of Beloit and a graduate of his educational institutions. Now therefore, the Beloit City Council hereby extends the welcome of Beloit to all filmmakers and visitors to our community for the Beloit International Film Festival, February 24th to March 5th, 2017. And we thank the hundreds of volunteers for celebrating this city and its people through the power of film presented this 20th day of February, 2017. David F. Lubke, Council President.
Thank you very much, President Lubke, Vice President Levy, City Councilors, City Manager. We are thrilled to be here tonight to accept this proclamation. We certainly appreciate the support that the City of Beloit and the City Council has given over the years, and I know some of you have even volunteered for us, and we sure appreciate that as well. This is our 12th season, and we're, I don't want to say bigger and better than ever, but we certainly are better than ever. Every year, we introduce a few changes. This year, we're particularly excited that our silent film showcase will be accompanied by the Beloit Memorial High School Jazz Orchestra for the first time, and it will be in the auditorium at the high school, so there will be no problem with seating. We'll have plenty of room for everybody that wants to see that, and it'll be very, very exciting. The film will be "The Freshman," starring Harold Lloyd. As a proclamation indicated though, some of our usual features are back. BIF cares, where we focus on particular issues that are important either socially, medical issues and so on, and we thank Beloit Health Systems for sponsoring that. Our classic film, you all have a copy of our program book. Unfortunately, we had a last-minute change just after that went to press. The classic film will be "Guess Who's Coming to Dinner." At the time, a very hard-hitting social issue, and I think it's important at this point in our cultural development as a society to reexamine a film like that and reevaluate what it meant at the time and how we could apply it to today. And then the usual, lots of fun films. If you're just interested in escapism, we've got plenty of that. Hard-hitting documentaries, BIF has never shied away from controversy, and we do have some very important documentaries. Tickets this year, same as always, $10 for adults, $5 for students. If you buy it during the festival, buy it early, you save a buck. It's $9 before the festival or online. Please come, please enjoy it, because BIF, for 12 years now, has brought the world to Beloit and Beloit to the world. And with that, I want to introduce our new incoming Executive Director, Max Macon.
Counselors, for this recognition and the honor of being here, I just want to take this chance to introduce myself. I am from Beloit and thrilled to be back a part of its community, and I hope to see all of you out at the movies and everyone here too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Max and Marty, I just mentioned that today's Sidney Poitier's 90th birthday.
Under public hearings, we have a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from C1 Office District to M1 Limited Manufacturing District for property located at 1801 Gateway Boulevard. This is first reading.
Mr. Pennington.
Good evening. Gateway Brewing Company has submitted an application for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district class from C1 to M1, which is Limited Manufacturing District, for the northernmost 5.1 acres of the property at 1801 Gateway. The applicant has made an accepted offer to purchase the property from the city. The Plan Commission recently approved a certified survey map that would essentially separate this lot, that would create a separate 5.1-acre parcel. It'll be known in the future, once that CSM is recorded, it'll be known in the future as 1895 Gateway Boulevard. That is the piece that would be purchased by the applicant and potentially developed as a microbrewery that would do business as G5 Brewing. The proposed microbrewery use is the impetus for this request. The M1 zoning gives the applicant greater long-term flexibility in terms of production and distribution functions, trucking, so forth, that are associated with a growing brewery. The city will retain ownership of the remaining 30 acres, and that 30 acres will keep the address of 1801 Gateway Boulevard. It'll remain zone C1 Office. There's a zoning map in your packet. As shown in the map, the subject property is across the street from North Star and the Alliant Energy Substation. Both of those properties are already zoned M1, as is the majority of the Gateway Business Park. This would simply extend that zoning across the street, where it currently ends at the Alliant Substation. The Gateway Business Park is planned to include a mix of office, manufacturing, warehouse uses. The comp plan also recommends supportive uses like daycares, hotels, restaurants, et cetera. The subject property, the 5 acres, are surrounded by undeveloped ag land, although the North Star facility and Alliant Substation are nearby. Both the M1 zoning and the proposed microbrewery use are compatible with existing nearby uses and the planned business park uses. Plan Commission reviewed on February 8th and recommended approval 6-2-0.
Are there questions? Now, this is the first reading. There's no motion.
Open.
Okay, at this time then, after our first reading, the public hearing will now open. First call for anybody who'd like to speak on this proposed microbrewery. Second call. Third and final call. Okay, the public hearing will close.
I'll make a motion to lay over the zoning.
Motion by?
Second.
Second by Duncan? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Public comments? At this time, we'll have public comments. Anybody who'd like to speak would come forward and speak for up to three minutes. We'd like to ask you to not make any disparaging comments or make any public attacks on anybody. Okay, I have two people who have signed up. First, Jasmine, and I'm sorry if I mess up your name. Carbajal?
Carbajal.
Carbajal. Jasmine, come forward. Just please give your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Carbajal from 2327 Wood Drive. I am the president of Cambios Positidos, a council of the LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens, and our mission is to represent, advocate, and support the Latino community. If I could ask all of those that are here tonight with me supporting this petition, please raise your hand so the City Council can see who are here in support. Si vienen a apoyar las tarjetas, por favor levanten la mano. I come before you this evening with 180 signatures on a petition requesting that the Beloit City Council look into the possibility of creating a municipal ID card for residents of Beloit that do not have means to obtain a state driver's, a state ID or a driver's license. Their inability to do so can be due to the lack of proper documentation or because of legal status. Some of the groups of people who have difficulty obtaining a state ID include individuals who are homeless, those who were not able to obtain their birth certificate, and those who are undocumented immigrants. This is not a driver's card. It would however be a step to helping those that obtain this identification card have a tool to show who they are. This would also not be a card used for voting. It's only for identification. Many businesses and services require an ID card to access services, such as schools, banks, the library, the video store, and rentals. This would allow all of our residents to have equal access to the community services. The ID card could require a small fee for those that apply to obtain it in order to cover the cost. As part of your consideration, a confidentiality policy would have to be established to protect the privacy of those applying to receive a municipal ID card. The City of Milwaukee has passed this type of ID card, and it can serve as a model for us here in Beloit. Looking into this issue to meet a need that exists for many of our neighbors sends an important message from the city to all of our residents that we care about them. They belong and are valuable members of our community. I would ask that you schedule a City Council workshop to discuss and explore this matter further. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I have the petition.
Thank you, Jasmine. I'd like to ask our City Manager to respond on behalf of the council.
And if I may, if you would interpret for me?
Sure, of course, of course.
Representatives from LULAC, on behalf of Council President Lubke, members of the City Council, and our entire community, thank you for the work that you do.
Para representantes del Consilio de LULAC, de parte del presidente Lubke y del Consejo de la Ciudad, gracias por todo lo que están haciendo.
The work you do to advocate for the interests of the Latino population, and thank you very much for sharing your concerns tonight.
El trabajo que hacemos para advocar y dar representación a nuestra comunidad latina, y vamos a considerar lo que se está proponiendo esta noche.
Usually, we don't respond to public comment, but you gave us the courtesy of letting us know you were coming and the message that you would be bringing.
Usualmente no responden a los comentarios públicos, pero como les dimos con anticipación este anuncio que ibanos a estar haciendo, por eso decidieron hacer este comentario público, esta respuesta.
The City of Beloit is very supportive of the opportunity for all people to have an official driver's license, and we will continue to lobby for legislation that will allow this in Wisconsin.
La ciudad de Beloit apoya lo que se está haciendo para tratar de adquirir tarjetas de manejo a nivel estatal. Están tratando de apoyar a nivel estatal esta iniciativa.
There are 12 other states and the District of Columbia that have already implemented these laws.
Hay 12 estados más el Distrito de Colombia que ya implementaron estas leyes.
In lieu of that, we will also continue to research how other communities like Milwaukee are implementing municipal identification cards.
Y por eso vamos a también nosotros investigar cómo lo ha hecho Milwaukee y los beneficios de dar una tarjeta de identificación.
We see the need, as you have defined it, and hope that there's a way to accomplish this eventually being recognized by the state.
Y vemos la necesidad, y queremos hacer esto para establecerlo y eventualmente que también se ha reconocido por el estado.
The last thing we want is for any unintended consequences to occur from issuance of such an ID, so we will be carefully evaluating the work of these communities that share our concerns and would love to work closely with you as well.
También lo último que queremos es que haya algo que pase, por ejemplo, con las direcciones, nos tenemos que trabajar muy juntos para ver cómo vamos a proteger esa información también.
As members of our common council have said, the police chief and I, we are committed to protecting all people in Beloit from victimization and to keeping everyone safe.
Como lo ha dicho el jefe de policía, yo misma y algunos miembros de nuestro consilio, estamos nosotros aquí para proteger a todas las personas de la ciudad de Beloit.
Beloit's diverse population is one of our greatest strengths.
La diversidad de la población de Beloit es una de nuestras fuerzas más grandes.
We appreciate you with LULAC and those you represent, and thank you very much for coming this evening.
Nos aprecio ustedes como LULAC y a los que representan, y gracias por venir esta noche. Thank you so much.
You are so welcome.
Thank you, Jasmine. Our second form, Ellen Page. Ellen?
Your name and address, please.
Okay. Ellen Page, 1798 Post Road.
Thank you.
I would like to address the Cadlec Drive condo development. I stood before you some time ago in regards to the same development. I believe back then, the developer wanted to construct 96 to 144 rental units, which was denied. I'm not sure if standing here before you today will be, today with the same concerns will change the outcome of the addendum, but I would like to express them to you. This time, it's different. It's condos versus rentals, but the question is, will anyone want to buy these condos? Of course, I'd much rather see condos. Unfortunately, the existing six-unit condo never found buyers for them all, which means some, if not all, have been rented. I believe the reason for this is the 90 Ravenwood Apartments. No one wants this in their backyard. If they can't find buyers for the existing condo now, why would they, why would anyone think that they could find buyers for 42 more? And if they can't find buyers, these will also turn into rentals. So with that said, I'd kind of like to address some, just certain topics. The first one is traffic and the outlet. Right now, with Ravenwood and the one condo, we have 96 units. So if you average that out to two people per unit, we're at 192 vehicles, and the only way in and out is through West Heart Road and Robinson, North Robinson, to Post. And if the 42 condos are built, we are looking at an average of 276 vehicles, and that doesn't include the existing assisted living that is back there. So I did speak to a person on the planning commission or committee in regards to extending Cadlec Road to Elmwood, and I was told there was nothing they could do to make the developer extend that road to Elmwood. And is there anything, I'm questioning, that can be done possibly to make this happen where that road is extended all the way to Elmwood? And if not, would there be any reason why the exit onto Robinson north of Elmwood couldn't be an option? There's just a, it's just a little, like if you take Cadlec and you just go just a little bit further and go to the left if you're heading towards Elmwood, it's like there was like an existing drive right there that never was developed. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. To help slow down the traffic, would it be possible to also put a stop sign up on Caroline that meets North Robinson? I have a neighbor that I talked to that lives directly across from this intersection, and she's had two vehicles in her yard from people turning that corner too fast. They just come out, come flying out, and they, I don't know what they do, but we've had a lot of mailboxes taken out on the other curve from North Robinson to Post. My one neighbor actually moved his mailbox because it got hit so many times. So I guess what I'm saying is, the biggest thing that I feel is, could actually make this more of a, a better community, is having that existing road off of Elmwood to help alleviate the two main funnels out of there. Home values. I know that, I feel that my property value is being affected by this, and that's why I'm so passionate about this development. Also, crime, when I bought my house in '03, I always made a comment that it was, you just never saw the police presence back there, and I guess it was because there really wasn't a lot of stuff happening until Ravenwood Apartments got put in there, and we've got 90 units that we never had. So that's, that's my one concern. The condos, the condo, six-unit condo that is there right now, my aunt and uncle, who were in their 80s, rented one of those because they couldn't find buyers for them, and two men approached him in the middle of the day, beat him up, and stole his wallet. And after that, they moved. So I'm just really concerned about that type of thing happening. And the rental units, you know, the new condos that are possibly going to be approved, if they can't get, you know, if you don't have buyers for them, they're just going, it's just going to turn into a big rental complex. And my last comment is construction. I'm sure that this will probably definitely happen. I'm hoping maybe not as elaborate as it was going to, or at least have that drive into Elmwood. But once it starts, would there be any way that they could have a temporary entrance with all the dump trucks and construction trucks off of Elmwood? Because when they bought, built Ravenwood Apartments, we had all summer long masses of equipment and dump trucks. And I believe, from what I heard back then, they were supposed to be using West Heart because that didn't have a lot of homes and stuff on it. But they were coming down Post, the road I live on, and West Heart, and it was just, it was crazy with the traffic with the construction. And I'd just like to thank you for listening to my concerns. I know you will do everything possible to improve this development in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
First call. Second call for any more public comments. Third and final call. Okay, the public comments will be closed. Consent agenda.
All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member shall request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Sheila?
Thank you. I would like to request that Item B is in boy, be removed, please.
Item B? Anybody else? Okay, the consent agenda will consist of A, C, and D. Is there a motion? Move. Moved by Levy?
Second.
Seconded by Hendricks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0. B.
Six B is a resolution approving an addendum number two to Cadlec Drive condominium plat for the property located 2660 Cadlec Drive.
Mr. Pennington.
Harrison Associates, on behalf of DMW Development, has submitted a condominium plat, which is officially known as Addendum Number Two to Cadlec Drive condominium plat for the property at 2660 Cadlec. The attached location and zoning map in your packet shows the location of the property involved in this request. The proposed plat includes the construction of 42 additional units and four additional buildings to complete the Cadlec Drive condo project. This project was originally approved and zoned as a planned unit development, also known as a PUD, back in 2006. The PUD resolution from 2006 authorizes up to 48 condo units. The proposed change to the condo plat is consistent with the existing PUD zoning, and no additional zoning actions are necessary. In 2007, the developer obtained approval of a condo plat for 36 units. They constructed the first six-unit condo building before discontinuing the development during the recession. Last year, the applicant obtained approval of a condominium plat. It was known as Addendum Number One. They obtained approval last year for 42 additional units and five additional buildings. That layout has been changed, and according to the applicant, that plat will not be recorded. What's before you tonight is Addendum Number Two. It includes a different building type and layout, as shown on your, in your packet, for a total of 48 units. There are four proposed new buildings. One is a six-unit, single-story building that will essentially mirror the building that's out there currently. Three buildings are 12-story, or 12-unit, two-story buildings for a total of 42 units. Additional buildings include a mailroom, maintenance building, et cetera. Water Department has reviewed the plat and noted that the existing water and sewer mains are public. The other review agents did not submit any comments. Plan Commission reviewed this plat on February 8th and voted unanimously 6-0 to recommend approval, subject to the two conditions listed on your resolution.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Drew, could you clarify, if the condos aren't sold, is it true that they could be rented out?
Yes.
Okay. And to your knowledge, what has happened to the six existing condos that are there?
Developers representative is here tonight, but I believe they're all rental.
Okay. I am concerned. I've expressed this concern before about the rental density in that area, and I know the intention isn't to rent them, but it seems very likely that these units will be rented. And so I'm just going on the record as saying that I'm opposed to this because of the rental density. It's not fair to the people that live in that area that there's so many rental units there. So I wanted to make that comment. I also wanted to check with you to see if, if we had any authority to ask for the extension of Cadlec Drive to Elmwood.
Sure. We can always ask. My position has been that the PUD that was approved in 2006 is the land use approval. It's the zoning. It hasn't changed. This condominium plat fits that. If the developer wanted to increase the number of units beyond what was approved a decade ago, then I think, then I think that connection becomes even more important and could potentially be a condition of approval. That's what staff was recommending last time. Ms. Page referenced that development, that higher density. That's what was going to be recommended last time, but it did not go through. The piece that is the key to all this is 1715 Elmwood. That's 15 acres right on Elmwood that's not developed. A gentleman has been through this body a number of times for different applications for that land. It has an approved preliminary plat that does include the connection. So it does include the connection, but it's just a preliminary plat, hasn't been recorded, so the right-of-way does not exist. If that land is sold and it's currently for sale, that'll be the key to getting that connection.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand this, we can't, we can't require it because we don't have access to the right-of-way? Is that what you're saying?
In my opinion, there's not a connection between what the applicant is requesting, which is a condominium plat, and the requirement to build a roadway all the way down to Elmwood.
So, I mean, can I, as a City Councilor, make the case that the connection is there will be more traffic, and we need, we need another option for vehicles to be entering and exiting that area?
I mean, I would defer to the City Manager, City Attorney on that question.
Correct. So Drew is giving you solid planning advice and an understanding that there needs to be a direct nexus between the physical development and the traffic that's generated, also in looking at the other developable property near this area. We're also basing this recommendation off a 2006 plan that was previously approved with the same number of units. Once, so the number of units, even from the plan that was previously approved in 2016, has not changed. It is the location of the building, the layout, that is different. So I think that would be a difficult position to, to take and be successful with, because we have recently approved plats with the same numbers that did not include those requirements. If the number of units were to be increased, then I think that we would reevaluate those recommendations, if I'm hearing Mr. Pennington correctly.
And I'm sorry, just to be clear then, if the other parcel that you referenced, I don't remember the address exactly, if that ends up coming to us for development at that time, that makes sense to request that the extension occurs? Is that correct?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. All right, and I guess I would just ask, Mark's Insurance Traffic Review Committee, could you ask the Traffic Review Committee to add to their agenda the looking at the stop sign on Caroline?
Caroline, oh, yeah.
That was requested by the person who spoke before us. And again, I'd just like to say, I am voting against this. I have historically voted against the rental density in this area, and I think it's a mistake to have such concentrated rental units in one area. So, thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
I have a comment too, Dan. I don't share Sheila's concern over rental density, per se. We agreed to it in 2006, and the development's been pretty We agreed to it in 2006, and the developments have been pretty clear since then. I probably wouldn't have been too keen on this back then, even though without Cadlec Drive, you know, extension. And there's no right-of-way on the existing map for that purpose, except through Post Road, out of Lane Drive. I too agree with the, the public speaker that it, it doesn't look good for traffic volume in that area. I've driven it a couple of times myself to look at it, spent on our agenda a couple of times, and it's, it's not a, not a good in-and-out situation with the, relying on West Heart. But at the same time, as you say, there's no contingency built into that PUD for, for eliminating this development. And so it's a difficult call. I would like to see some way forward to get Cadlec Drive through somehow, some way. Even, and I know going through a Lane Drive would be almost, probably more, more, more controversial than, than, than doing the development itself. I think there's a lot of people down there on Robinson who would be very upset to see that go through to a Lane Drive. But right now, that's our only outlet. And, and that would be the only thing I could possibly support at this time, which is probably beyond the scope of this motion. So I, I don't really, I don't have an answer. I'm, I'm referring to you and Beth.
Mr. Lubke, if I may.
City Manager Luther.
I wanted to ask staff, and knowing that we have a representative of the developer here, we have worked with developers in the past on construction access. That was one of the concerns that was raised. Is that something that could possibly be accommodated?
Sure, absolutely.
Do we wish to hear from the developer at this time?
Sheila.
I do have one more comment, if that's okay.
Counselor DeForest.
I guess I would just like to say, this, this decision, this vote was taken in 2006. I came on council in 2008. That was nine years ago. And I'm sitting in this seat now. So I, with all due respect to the city council that was sitting here in 2006, this is before us now because we can decide to take a different vote. So I hate to just say, well, we gotta throw up our hands because the city council 2006 said it was okay. We know conditions have changed. We didn't have the Great Recession then. We have it now. And we know that condos are hard to sell. And so knowing what we know now, I think that it's in good conscience that we can say, hey, we think there's a good chance these will become rental units. I don't think the city council in 2006 knew that. We do know now, there's a really good chance they'll become rentals, and we'll have lots of rentals in this area. So I just wanted to make that case. I don't, I don't like the sense that we just say, oh, that's what 2006 city council did, so we're bound by that. It's before us to vote on today. So we can make a different vote. So I just want to make that case, please. Thank you.
I think it's only fair that we, if, if the developer is here to, he's heard our concerns, I'd like to hear from him as to, you know, it's legitimate concern. If I hear it right, the concern of the council is these turning into apartments. Could you give your name and?
Yeah, I'm Tom Wood from Harrison Associates, office out of Appleton.
Thank you, Tom.
I've been coming here for eleven years, since 2006. We did have this approved as a PUD with a certain number of units that were allowed. Yes, condo units were the preferred method of development at that time, and, and that was right before the condominium market basically went downhill. So we're looking to develop that piece of property into, and, and follow the, the original PUD with a condominium. But I can stand here before you right now and tell you they will be rented, every single one of them. There is no market for condos right now. Nobody's going to buy it. But we need to develop that piece of property. I stood here last summer, last spring, I forget when I was here last, here so often. And we had it approved at that time with forty-two more units, just like I'm here for right now. So we're not changing anything. We had it approved then. There were no conditions for that approval, other than meeting staff recommendations and, and conditions, and getting the plat approved, and things like that.
Let me ask, if I can ask you a question. We had the housing crisis and the stock market, I mean, fell in 2007, eight, and nine were the key years, and we've been on an upbeat trend since then. Why do you think these cannot sell as condos?
There, there is no market for it. I, I just know that. In all the state of Wisconsin, there is no market for condominiums right now. My, my clients are not developing condominiums. They wanted to develop this as a condominium because that was really the only way they were going to put buildings on that property. But right now, they're not going to sell them as condominiums. They're too expensive to build. The economics just don't work.
I appreciate your honesty. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify.
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify that I, I'm not against the condo rental thing like Sheila is. I'm concerned about the traffic, that's all. Thank you, Dave.
And what I can respond to is, at least twice in my years in the council, we've talked about that, and I know I brought it up one time, if that road could go through, because I think it was, it came up the first time as a concern of mine, because so many people are cutting through, not just on Post Road, but on other roads, to get back to those Cadillac Apartments and to the other areas. And that road would be a direct conduit right from Henderson. So we've been talking about this for years, that road going through, and it would, it's a major concern of ours as a council, and it has been a concern for ten years.
Understood. We have had many conversations with Mr. Myers, who owns the property. He has control, full control of his fifteen acres. We don't have any say in what he's going to do with that. We would love to see Cadillac go through. We would not, love.
Help you guys.
It would help us, absolutely. It would help the neighborhood. I know the comment was made about traffic and the, the construction traffic during the construction of Ravenwood and, and Cadillac extension not coming down Hart. Well, we had to build West Heart. That was part of the original development, so we couldn't use Hart as our main construction access because it wasn't there. We built that, it's now connected. That helped alleviate a lot of traffic concerns at that time. Having Cadillac extend down Elmwood would, would be huge. We would have no problem with that, but we worked with the city in extending it down to Elaine, and I agree that that would cause a lot more uproar if we were to ever have to build that street. But that is a dedicated right-of-way, has been turned over to the city.
Got it.
Yeah, the city owns that piece of land that could connect to Elaine if that, that time ever came. We don't have control over that anymore.
Any more questions for Mr. Wood?
Yeah.
Vice President Levy.
Trying to see if this is for Drew. I think it's going to be for a combination of individuals, so since I'll be ready to jump in, because now I'm, I'm kind of confused. Place I don't like to be. So we're, we're pushing forward for the condominium plats. But you're saying that you know right now, we're not going to sell those condominiums. So why aren't we going the route of seeking them for rental properties versus saying?
Because we voted against that.
Saying, right, I get that, but, because one thing, it appears, I mean, and.
We voted against that.
I know, but I'm saying, but what it appears, it just appears, that we bring it through for the, on the condominium, on the condominium side, knowing what the end result is going to be, which could be, and, and please don't take this the wrong way, or I'm saying it, but it just seems like we, we are saying, we're going to do it this way, but we know what the end result is going to be. Kind of a little flip thing there, which I'm not comfortable with. So worst-case scenario, if we say, we're not going to move forward with this at all, what are we looking at out there, Drew? Somebody? Because I understand we need to move forward because we need to do something with the property, but I, I guess.
So the condominium, the addendum number one that was approved last year is what you would be left with. So that would be the five additional buildings, two-story buildings. That was what was approved in 2016, and that's what's in effect, as we, so to speak.
What is the timeframe on moving this, this forward? Is there a possibility to, possibly lay this over to our next meeting? Is there urgency to do this now?
What I would suggest is if the council isn't comfortable approving the plat as recommended by Plan Commission, it should be referred back to the Plan Commission. The difference is between addendum number one, that was approved in 2016, and five proposed buildings with the same number of units, and the four buildings that are before you this evening, again with the same number of units. But because the language in the PUD only authorizes staff to approve minor adjustments to those plans, we did not think, nor do I now, think that a change from five buildings to four buildings is insignificant, and that's why it's going back through the planning process. It did already go to Plan Commission and come back with unanimous approval. But if the, the council isn't comfortable this evening, Plan Commission could reevaluate, but they would need some direction from the council on your concerns about the project.
Counselor DeForest, you have a question?
Done.
Did you have any more comments?
No, but I would, when time come, I would like to make a motion to send this back to Plan.
There are no more questions. Do you want to make the motion?
At this time, I would like to make a motion that we send this back to the Plan Commission with the concerns that council have expressed this evening, and have them take another look at it with our concerns, you know, attached to it, or.
Specify what those concerns are.
We have concerns of, we know that now they're, they're going to be rental properties. We have concerns from the neighborhood. We have concerns about traffic. If I'm missing anything that's added, so when it goes back to Plan, we know exactly what we're looking at. But I guess my biggest, I guess my biggest concern with, with the whole thing, and I understand trying to move forward, is that it looks as though we're presenting it as one thing when we know exactly what it's going to be. So if we know exactly what it's going to be, then I would suggest that we say, you know what, I mean, we need to start over and say, this is what we want. This is what, this is kind of what we want. We know they're going to be rental, so why not just come out and say, we want all these properties to be rental properties?
Well, I think, just for, for some clarity, ultimately, we can't dictate whether a property is going to be owner-occupied or rental. So it is the, the owner's disposition there. And regardless of how the units are either purchased or leased, they still have to have a, a planned unit development in this case. So all of the regulatory facets are really very similar, if not identical, regardless of that issue. So from a planning perspective, I think you ultimately have to look at, do you want living units at this location? And if that's inconsistent, then that's a separate issue. But I believe the zoning and all of the other land use guidelines are already approved to allow this development to move forward, but for these final changes in the layout and the number of buildings. If this is denied, or does not move forward, however that occurs, then what is currently on the books is the opportunity to record the final plat that was approved in 2016. And those were the five buildings with the forty-eight, or forty-two?
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight total units, thank you, with the six existing. So six existing plus forty-two new construction. So with no, with no action whatsoever, that is what is currently approved. Now, whether or not the developer chooses to record that and move forward with construction remains to be seen, but that is one potential consequence of no action or of a denial. Just to try and lay things out, not advocating one way or another, just kind of letting you know where we are.
David. You made, you made a motion then, Vice President Levy, based on rental concerns, traffic concerns, neighborhood concerns. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Sir, we'll have a chance to speak again.
Let's take this motion first. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion seconded by DeForest. All in favor say aye.
Hi, Ms. Lee, do you want to take the vote before asking if it's.
I just.
But I think.
Okay, okay.
There was a.
Discussion, I'm sorry.
I also wanted to point out that we are going to, in this proposal, it's a higher density, there's more rental units in this proposal than there was in the, or in the old proposal than there is in this proposal. So traffic concerns are less with this one than they are with the original one. So that's an improvement on traffic consideration.
I'm sorry, I need to correct you. The number of units are identical as to what was approved into addendum number one in 2016.
Okay, I was trying to follow that in the notes here, and I got lost.
The number of units are identical. The number of buildings are different.
Right, okay. I was trying to read it here and.
Other questions on the motion?
Well, just do you want to allow him a chance to speak before you take the vote?
I think it's fair, yes, but I would just ask if there are other questions for counselors first. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. You know, I was just being honest with the rental issue. There, there really is no other way around this. We need to develop that piece of property. It's either develop it with our new plan, because they can make this one work financially. The old plan, the one we had approved last year, they can't do. They put the numbers together and they can't build it. So they're left with basically a blighted piece of property. They can't do anything with it. And that's six units is the only thing that's going to be built there, and they need to get out from under this thing. So we're not doing anything to change the originally, the original approved PUD. We're not doing anything with that. It's the same number of units that was approved in the PUD. So we're not, I guess I, and, and you can't, like City Manager mentioned, we can't, you can't restrict them from renting those units, just because it's a, it's a form of ownership. It's all the condominium provides, okay? So there's going to be still one owner of forty-eight units, but he's going to rent them out. He's going to choose to rent them out. And there is nothing in the law that restricts us from doing that. And so I don't see where that would have any bearing on another decision going back to Plan Commission. I don't know what they would be looking at. So, like Drew mentioned, we do have an approved plan from last year. They can't build that one. So we're just looking to get that site developed, get it done.
Can I, I will admit, last year, you did say they were going to rentals too.
Yes, I did.
I know you did.
Yep.
So you're, this is not new in that regard.
This is basically the same meeting as a year ago, well, not quite a year ago, but last year.
And you're still just as honest, so thank you.
It's the way it is.
Before we call the question, if I could ask, City Attorney Krieger or Manager Luther, what purpose would it serve then to go back with this motion to the Planning Commission?
You can ask that the Plan Commission reconsider issues of traffic, et cetera. However, because this is the same number of units, I think that would be difficult. You have a proposal before you that is substantially similar with, while not minor changes, they're not fundamentally altering the, the use of the site. I'll defer to the city attorney. I, I think that the Plan Commission would be hard-pressed to make alterations, given that your traffic counts, and those issues aren't going to be impacted by your number of units. They would be, don't misunderstand, but with the same number of units that were previously approved, that would be difficult.
Is it fair to say that nothing would really change going back to Plan Commission?
I, I don't know how you, I, I wasn't at the Plan Commission meeting, so I can't speak to what happened there, but without additional guidance on what you want them to look at, I don't know if they didn't look at that the last time.
And I guess just to, I guess just to clarify, I, I don't even, my original thought was, if this was not a sense of urgency to get approved tonight, my original thought was, bring it back at least at our next meeting, because we have, we're having discussion here to give some of us a little opportunity to ask a few more questions of City Manager or Drew before we make a decision. Does it have to go right back to Plan? If we don't think anything's going to change, then at least lay it over at least for, to our next meeting.
And you can certainly do that as well. The council can choose to wait and take action at the next council meeting.
Do you want to change your motion?
Yeah, I would do that, that we lay it over to our next meeting.
You have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion right now. We need to approve or deny it. Okay, any more questions for Kevin? Okay. We'll take a vote on the motion as made.
Right, you could withdraw his original motion if you have, whoever was the second, I don't remember who was the second one.
Sheila. I, I would be willing to withdraw my second.
I would, I would draw my original motion and, and make a new motion to lay this over into our next scheduled meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Duncan. Any questions? Okay, the motion is made by Levy, seconded by Duncan, to lay this over to our next meeting. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Five to one is the vote to lay over.
Could I ask what is going to be accomplished, coming to another meeting next month?
Just time for counselors to ask questions to the various parties and.
Okay, I can, I can vouch for the Plan Commission. One. One question was asked of me. Where are they going to park? That was it.
This is not going to the Plan Commission?
I know, I understand that. I'm just wondering why there's any reason to push this thing.
I think it gives them a chance to further to... I swear, the city council, not the Plan Commission.
No, I understand that.
I think it gives them...
I totally understand that. I just don't understand why we're having to do that.
Just a chance to ask questions, Tom, to the engineers, I think. Hopefully, a vote can be taken at next meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, it gives you a chance to be deliberative about the issue, and if additional two weeks is needed, it's within their purview.
Two weeks, is that what it is?
Yes. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, ordinances?
There are no ordinances nor appointments, so we're at counselor activities and upcoming events.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. All right, first of all, I would like to extend my gratitude to our LULAC chapter who have brought forward the concerns about us considering the possibility of a municipal ID card, and I'm pleased that we will look at that issue and see if we can guarantee the privacy and protection of our residents in pursuing that. So I want to thank Jasmine Carbajal for bringing that forward to us, and those who came to our meeting tonight to share their concern with us. I was pleased to be able to participate in the Immigration Resources Workshop that was held at Hackett School. We had, by informal headcount, over 200 people, which is fantastic, and I just want to thank all of the many volunteers who came together to organize that event and make it possible. And there was fantastic information there, and I think the most critical part of that workshop was how it communicated to the residents who live in Beloit, who are immigrants, that we care about them, we're supportive of them, and we want to do what we can to address their concerns and provide resources for them and their families. We want all of our families in Beloit to thrive and feel valued and welcome here. So was pleased to help play a part in organizing that and participating in that, and so many people helped make that possible. So thank you to those individuals. I am thrilled to attend BIF, looking forward to it tremendously, and I'm also planning on being at the Grand Avenue Pub for several nights for the live music. So I'm not a very good dancer, so if you want to come and get some entertainment watching me dance, you can do that, but I'm going to have a good time. And I'm so thankful to the many, many volunteers that make BIF possible. Thank you, Marty, for your leadership in organizing this year, and to Rod and Max for their work as well in making BIF such a great success, to our many sponsors. It truly is ten days of Beloit being able to shine, and people get to see us at our very best. Thank you to those Beloiters who just extend great hospitality during that time. I know that visitors often comment about how, when they come into our community, how they feel welcomed, and their questions are answered, and we go out of our way to assist them. So thank you in advance to Beloiters for really extending the hospitality to visitors we have from all over the world that come to our Beloit International Film Festival. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Counselor Prishel.
Thanks a lot to the BIF people for making Beloit look really good out there in the international community. But I hope the line of winter doesn't come and do a rerun on you this year. Coming up this week, Wednesday and Thursday, but on Thursday is ribbon cutting for the Hendricks Career Tech Facility, where I worked for 20-plus years, and I took a little quick look at it today. I think it is not a school, they wanted to make sure I understood that. It's for career development and aid, helping people. It's really amazing to see, and I think all Beloiters owe a huge debt to Diane Hendricks and the Hendricks family and Hendricks Corporations that have helped keep Beloit looking beautiful all the time. Those places are amazing. And I walked up there, and every time I go in there, it's like, I couldn't believe they could do better than I could imagine. It's always better than I imagined. So it's really quite a thing to see. There's a lot of stuff going down there. Thank you very much, David.
Counselor Duncan.
I'm on, okay. I was honored to attend the Downtown Beloit Association Annual Awards Dinner at La Casa Grande on February 10th, along with Mark. You joined me there. To celebrate the successes of the downtown businesses and volunteers, Shana Elamine and her team at the Downtown Beloit Association did a great job. Congratulations to the MVPs. I know there was also an article in the Beloit Daily News. Congratulations to Cindy, I hope I'm saying this right, Giordini, Megan, Warntes, Betsy Smeakin, Tim Taylor, Scott Thiel, Kim Avlinbacher, and Elaine Ribric. And on February 7th, I was part of a group that toured the Hendricks Family Heart Hospital at Beloit Health System. It is truly a state-of-the-art facility. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, it's just magnificent. If you missed it, you will have another opportunity to view it in June. Also, I want to thank Mark Prishel for his wonderful pictures that he takes and posts on Facebook. They are certainly telling terrific stories about our community, very inspiring. So thank you, Mark. And I'm also looking forward to BIF. So I'm sure we'll get a lot of great pictures at BIF also, Mark, so thank you very much.
Counselor Hendricks.
Speaking of BIF, I know one film that I'm particularly excited to see is tied to the system, because it's directed by Beloit's own Leah Jones, who is one of my classmates, Beloit Memorial graduate of 1997. Well, she's my sister's classmate, actually, but she's Beloit bred, and so I'm not sure if anyone else is from Beloit that's presenting or has a film at BIF, but I'm excited about that, because I know her personally, and it's a short documentary, but I'm very proud of her. So I'll be looking forward to that as well as others. And then I would like to mention that the 10th Annual Father-Daughter Dance is this Saturday. It's always a great event to have all the daddies and daughters at the high school. This year, the price is $15 per couple, and it will be from 3:00 till 5:00 at Beloit Memorial High School. So if you have any questions, you can contact John Kaminsky at Beloit Memorial.
I think Mike Trolley from Beloit also has a film in there. Vice President Levy.
I have nothing.
And I'll just briefly mention that I was honored to represent the council and the city at the 25-year celebration of the Rock Trail Coalition. These people have been building a peace trail from, it's now coming in from, well, Big Hill Park, it's reached as far as Big Hill, but eventually, it's going to go all the way to Waukesha, some eighty-some miles. But right now, you can walk this peace trail from Big Hill Park through Janesville and north, and these people, for 25 years, have been chopping down trees, getting land. Ken and Diane Hendricks gave a lot of land by Afton and land to help it extend to Big Hill Park. But people have donated their time, their effort, their sweat and toil to build this trail for biking, for skiing, walking, and we presented a proclamation from the City of Beloit to this group last week. That's all I have. City Manager's presentation.
Annual Landmarks Commission Report, 2016.
Alex.
Alex Blazer, the Chairperson of the Commission.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, city counselors, city manager, and city attorney. Once again, it's my pleasure to give this report, because I just know you've been wondering what we've been doing for the last year. That and the fact that there's this ordinance 32.510, oh-five-ten, that says it's a requirement. But I enjoy it, you know, I'm getting pretty good at it, I think. The commission consists of commissioners, of course, the chair, myself, Alex Blazer, Ruth Vader, Rick McGrath, Ellen Joyce, Mary Ann Carroll, Steve Truesdale, and Chris Jacobson. We do have a turnover every once in a while, so the names kind of get to be new. The city council representative is vacant? Okay, I guess we're getting a new city council representative. And the staff liaison is Drew Pennington, Director of Planning. We are getting a new planner, though, very soon. Let's see, the Beloit Landmarks Commission approves COAs for certificates of appropriateness to alter the design landmarks, landmark site structures within the historic district of the city shall first require this certificate of appropriateness. Preservation, let's see, three historic districts. We have Bluff Street District, which consists of 115 properties, the College Park District, which consists of 156 properties, and the Merrill Street District, which consists of four properties, and there are 46 individually listed landmarks, equalling 321 locally designated landmarks regulated by the Beloit Historical Preservation Ordinance. During the year, we had the following COAs for the properties consisting of gutters and fascia, for six fence installations, six handrails, porch repairs, three ramps, sidewalks, pavements, 11 roof repairs and replacements, one structural repair, four siding, nine windows and doors, two signs. New, we had one new addition, four tuck pointings, one demolition, and four garage repairs. Additional commission activities. We did finally get our signage up in the historic, and there's a really nice picture of one there, and matter of fact, it looks like it's kind of close to my house. Anyway, I know I do have a couple close to my house, I actually live in a historic district. Let's see, we have the street signs, toppers, and mid-block ID signs, and they were installed in January of 2017, so that's new information. There's another couple of pictures there of the sign toppers on the street signs. They did turn out pretty good. Of course, it took quite a while to get it all approved, so a lot of discussion in getting those things done. Let's see, we also were involved in an intensive survey, which resulted in a new historic district of 150 homes. The Milwaukee Road Emerson Street Historical District completed the public meeting and surveys in November and through December of 2016. The surveys showed the neighborhood's support of national and Wisconsin Register. And we're now awaiting the Wisconsin Historical Society approval of grants for nomination work. I think it might have been at that meeting. Wow, that's it, done before I know it. I would like to thank Drew Pennington for preparing these notes and the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Alex, appreciate it.
Can I ask Alex one quick question?
Sure. Alex, can you take a few questions?
I'm excited about the intensive survey that was done and the grants that are coming. Have you guys decided on what the parameters of those will be yet? Or I'd love to hear just a little bit more about that, like a brief, brief blurb.
He just knows he knows more.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll get the grant. We should find out in February.
Okay.
They'll make their decision. The neighborhood does support it. The neighborhood meeting, that was clear at the neighborhood meeting, and then also through a mailed survey that was sent to everyone affected, and they mailed back to us.
Great.
The neighbors support national register nomination, but they are not yet in support of local regulation.
Okay.
So just to make that distinction clear, very broad support for getting on the national and state registers, a lot of heartburn about potentially being regulated locally. So those are two very distinct steps that'll be years apart.
Can I ask for clarification? Is possible to do one and not the other?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Alex, for your service.
Any other questions for Alex? Thanks again, Alex. Reports from boards and city officers.
11A is a resolution approving the 2017 Annual Action Plan and CDBG budget.
Yes, we're going to hold this.
Staff was requesting that this be held over.
This will be held over. Is there a motion? Moved by Hendricks, seconded by Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes five-zero.
Should we say? Four to two.
Two, right.
Why don't we, for the record, ask Counselors DeForest and... Can I use myself?
Okay.
And let's take that matter up in its entirety after they...
Okay, start over, okay.
11A is a resolution approving the 2017 Annual Action Plan and CDBG budget.
Is there a motion to hold over?
Some would.
Moved by Hendricks.
Second.
Seconded by Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four-zero passes. Okay, you can invite them back in.
11B, the city council may adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 1985 Sub 1E to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, in particular to discuss 949 Third Street and 936 Second Street, and pursuant to 1985 1G Wisconsin Stats for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is likely to become involved, namely to discuss town of Beloit's request for a possible boundary agreement.
Is there a motion to go to closed session and not reconvene? Motion is made by DeForest, seconded by Duncan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six-zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.